Hey. Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of council Monday, March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. So I'd like to call it to order. It's two o'clock, so we'll get going here. First item is the adoption of the agenda. And the motion is that the agenda for the regular council meeting of March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five be adopted. Sir Mover, thank you, Council Martin and Council Hanson. All those in favor? That was carried. Thank you. And now I just need a resolution to resolve into the committee of the hall, please. Is there someone to make that? Thank you, Council Benson and Council Hanson. All those in favor? Thank you. That was carried as well. We have no delegations today, so we'll move right on to the department updates. And the first one up is Public Works.
Hey, also with some updates for utilities, we're currently working at nine sixty water road. We're doing the sanitary service line renewal, which has evolved into a storm line repair because as we find one problem, we excavate and we find a big crack in the storm lane. So that's where that goes. Probably done by a tunnel, I think. Public Works, we're working on one of Brian's projects, Brian Lewis' projects, we're working on a new wash pad and fill station. So we're installing another waterline and storm drain as well. So that's for some efficiencies. Many times we get bottled back, the tractor truck, the sweeper, the water truck show up at the same time. They're waiting, you know, waiting there to get filled up. So this should speed that process up. I guess he'll be working on some ditching and storm improvements. We stocked, did most of it. We stopped because of the rain. Anything we did was just washing out, so we'll kind of go back to that and pack it. We're also working on our fire hydrant deficiency list. Every year we inspect fire hydrants, test them, and we come up with a list of things that we need to address. Our next one is fifty ninety six Columbia Ave. One of the isolation valves is broken, so we'll replace that this week. Weekly grid inspections were all of Public Works are continuing, looking at all the trash racks, making sure they're cleaner and flowing. They're called trash racks, so they collect all the logs to read.
Trash racks?
Trash racks, yeah.
Also known as a grizzly.
We just completed our three month flush list. That's where we take all the sewer lines that are on our deficiency list and we go through every three months and run with the doctor's. So that's done. Tell them it's three months. We just clean our sewage lift stations inspections. We do that typically, we have a weekly, it's just a brief look at them, make sure there's nothing going wrong. And we do a monthly as well, which is a little more extensive. We actually go down into the dry wells and bring them again. We got our city plumber electricians. We got ability work orders, so they're ongoing. I can't go through all of them at times, so let's leave that there. We're going to start our directional water being flushing and pumping, weather dependent, in a couple of weeks. Water treatment plant, we just wired in, finished today, wired in the raw water flow meter. We had it installed for quite a while, but we just finally, we're able to wire it in, so it'll be up and running. The water treatment plant operators, they're working on brushing some of the facilities, because we had, it's ongoing maintenance we have to do every year. And last, a little bit of training, our city's tractor truck operator, Sean Hanson. He's away in Vernon, taking his level one water distribution, so. Yeah, and yeah, that's about it. We're just a little bit of preventive maintenance as usual.
Spring work.
Yeah.
Okay, um, thank you. Does council have any questions? Okay, thanks so much for being here today. So next up is grounds and roads manager.
Mayor Council, thank you for having me. I want to provide an update from the grounds and roads department. Since the last meeting, end of February into early March came a lot of freeze, the low temperatures. So we weren't plowing much for snow, but we still had equipment outstanding regularly over nights. The past two weeks, the weather's warmed up, as we all know, but the freezing nights have still been at risk here and there, so that's why we've held off with like the full street cleaning operation, because I didn't want to have the sweepers out and then be standing the next day. So we've kind of been in that weird transition right now. But the extended forecast now is showing positive temperatures consistently throughout the night, so street cleaning will all commence this week. We had this flusher a little bit last week, but the sweeper's ready to go, and it'll be deployed tomorrow, so we'll be full swing as of tomorrow, moving forward. Three, three to four weeks by the time we get everything done. Ongoing jobs right now, so park opening preparations, we're trimming all the dead foliage, picking up broken branches from the winter, dropped branches, debris. Anything else laying around, we're just kind of getting the parks ready to wake up. Playground inspections, again, we're doing a thorough check right now. Just after the winter months, so that they're prepped for when the weather gets nice and the kids are on it. We've replaced a lot of parts. Dismantled a couple that needed repair and yeah, just doing a thorough inspection on all playgrounds. Centennial Park, you, somebody probably noticed, we've been in there for a couple of weeks. We trimmed all the branches along the highway bank and we've blown all of that, all of that duff down into the park and we're removing it now. It hasn't been done for a long time, so that park's looking really nice. Trying to tread lightly with the ground as it is still soft, so it's, you know, you can get equipment on it sometimes, sometimes you gotta pull out of there, but the boat launch, we spent the better part of a week there with all the logs that had come up on shore through the low waters. So we remove all the logs, get them out of there, so that when the river comes back up, they're not, they're not bashing up against the dock and creating more damage to work for us. Street flushing, as I said last week, we kind of started just the high sand accumulation areas, the nooks and crannies that the sweeper can't really get to. We try and flush all that out, so we have started that next week. As of today, we're starting to open all facility, like park facilities, so turn the water back on, getting the washings operational by the end of the week, kind of getting the parks woken up. And lastly, spring cleanup will start on April seventh and will be completed April twenty third.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Council Hanson?
And in regards to the sweepers coming out, is there a plan to kind of prioritizing areas or giving the neighborhood you're coming through a heads up? Just so that way then they can prepare in advance to move vehicles off the road? You know, that's just some sort of maybe working with Claire or whatever, just, you know, saying we're doing Blommary or we're doing these areas, so people can go, oh, hey, I, you know, a good idea. I'm going to move my vehicles off the road, try to find, so it's better, so it's not redundant work that sometimes it gets missed because you got too much traffic away.
Yes, so I have, I spoke to Claire probably two weeks ago on just exactly that, about getting things scrapped. The sweeper hasn't been, the sweeper just, they've just fixed it, got it ready to go today. Historically, just because of how the snow melt goes, we would start kind of out and would eat it, because that's typically the area that gets rid of the snow first and then work this way. So we'll probably follow that same procedure, because the boys are used to it, but yes, Claire does know, her and I are in contact, so that we can get notices out on Facebook or however she wishes to do that, so that people can do exactly that, so that the first pass we're collecting as much as we can. For second and third and so on.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from council, just for Josh before we let him go?
Thanks, Josh.
No, okay. Thank you so much for being here today, Josh. Next up is our purchasing and mechanical manager.
Well, everyone, Mayor, Council, senior managers, learned colleagues. Thank you for this opportunity. We'll start trying to keep it in keeping with our directives of being brief. For starters, at Public Works, we have completed our lead to replacement, which thankful for the funding for that, started out as covering up a welder and a generator. We decided to bring that around the building and give ourselves some more coverage over top of our waste oil and rags and sort of our, some of our storage areas there. So that's done and that looks quite, looks great. That was work that we ended up contracting out just based on some personnel shortages and a few things that were going on there, but done just the same. It looks very nice. So we're interested in clean up in the yard as well, so as soon as we get the snow off, it's always nice to be able to collect items and get things kind of squared away, which included a fairly good amount of some waste wood and things like that that we collected over the winter, that we just were trying to repurpose and find a different way to dispose of that wood, as opposed to going straight to the landfill, which if we can get away from tipping fees is our goal. To Josh's credit, he found an individual who will take, has taken five large loads of wood from us. We've cut it down to size to a point where we can move it in our hook truck. So just for the cost of moving it, that saves us probably still a thousand dollars or more in tipping fees. So that's a good one. Speaking and working with the contractor, the contractor who did the lead to has not demoed from the site, so in discussion with Mr. McClure, decided to keep them there. They're the ones who will be setting the pad for us. Craig's crew is doing the groundwork and putting in the water lines, et cetera, for our wash bay, our second wash pad, pardon me, but also they're going to do a set in place for concrete and a lean to structure for our, so we can move our fuel cubes. So we found that our congestion behind the mechanic shop with the fuel cubes currently are, is a place where we just want to sort of, we can move that traffic away from there. That'll give us, it's a little safer for the amount of foot traffic we have in the area as well, and we're going to be able to increase the size of our fuel capacity onsite, which will be super helpful for operations year round for units that we have. We don't want to necessarily run smaller units out to the Benson Oil to the fuel pumps there, sorry, pardon me. And then for the fleet purchasing side, we've taken delivery of our two new Ford Lightnings. We have electronic, fully electric, pardon me, personnel lift as we'll be landing in Kelowna this week. So they'll do a pre-delivery inspection and get that unit ready for us, but we shouldn't expect delivery here imminently without one, so that's excellent. Mechanics are in full transition. Winter units are coming out, summer units are coming online and everything else that, most of that gear's already been gone through once through the winter. But we always end up with a spring check over before we kick the stuff out to go to work for summer operations. On the safety side, we've developed a biohazard kit to allow our staff to do this rather unsavory type of work around town, where we do cleanups of not nice items, but that includes blood and urine and feces and stuff that we do sometimes get called for. In order to do that in a way that makes reasonable sense and, you know, and meets everybody's expectations from a safety standpoint, we've decided that a kit ready to go would be our best approach. This also includes the development of a safe work procedure and a, and a safe operating procedure. So one is kind of the overarching, this is how we would like to do things, and then the one is, the SOP is kind of the piece by piece, line by line. Put your gloves on, we do it like this, like this, like this. So there's our directive there. So I think both are an excellent new addition, though it's not the work we like to do. If we're going to do it, we should be set up to do it properly. So last item here, Joint Occupation, Health and Safety Committee, which I co-chair at this time, or have been, pardon me, for the entire time I've been with the city, but at this time, we don't have a, a union co-chair. But we're working with QP to get a, a new union co-chair as well. And there is an annual review of the terms of reference, but our terms of reference did not align with what was on the books and as far as procedurally with QP. So as part of this process, QP is going through their procedures to make sure that our terms of reference are all in alignment there, so we'll be working with our OHNS consultant starting Wednesday for a couple of days this week, so that's kind of an annual process that we go through and we get good value from that. And I'm hoping to have, for my next presentation with you, would be focused on an annual report from the OHNS committee, so. Any questions?
Sorry, I have one quick question. That biohazard kit that you developed, is that part of WorkSafe BC? Is that, do you, is it a directive from them or is it something that you developed in the?
No, it's not a directive, but it's something that in order to clean up. It would be a directive if we were in a hospital, or if you were a paramedic, you know, potentially you'd have to have a, and they don't direct you to have a kit. We've decided to go with a kit that would have gloves, glasses, proper sanitizer. We have a little pump sprayer bottle. We've gone so far as to buy a very small battery operated pressure washer that has a seven gallon jug that goes beside it that will allow you to wash and clean and then sanitize an area. And that'll allow us to do that year round, because what happens is if it's dead in winter, we don't have the flusher truck. We don't have a way to be able to clean this stuff in a way that, you know, we feel good about. So we've gotten things like our tieback disposable coveralls, rubber boots, and just a face shield and that sort of stuff. Again, you know, we, we, we're trying to do the work in a way that makes our crews comfortable, because it's pretty uncomfortable work to begin with, so.
It's unfortunate that you have to do this, but I just appreciate the fact that you've done it and now it's, you know, everybody is covered by it. So I think it's great. I think it's a great idea.
Well, there's always the question, we developed a Sharps disposal kit. And so that's kind of where this came from. We decided that if this was going to be something we're going to end up doing, we should have something in place to be able to deploy it quickly and answer those questions, because they come up every single time, you know, I'm not really comfortable, I'm not really trained. So we're going to go through the SOP and SWP with everybody once the kit's assembled fully. We should hope to have that done here in the next week, so.
Great, great. Thanks, Brian. Any other questions from council? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, under next up, Parks and Recreation, and we have sorry, Facilities Maintenance Manager, Brandon Agwell. Hi.
Good, well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me. I'd like to provide you with some common projects. So our Kinko Arena Refrigerated Floor project, the tender has been awarded. And now as we are getting towards the end of high season, we are going to have our initial kickoff meeting with the general contractor and engineering from all the parties associated with the project. And starting is going to be dependent on the smoke heaters, of course, and how hard it is to make it along the playoffs. And yeah, but then, so now we're, everybody's ready to start us in the project when time comes. And our Chief Recovery Phase Two Tender will be closing next week on April second. And so we'll be awaiting the bids to come in and then providing, reviewing them and then providing counsel with the public once those have been thoroughly gone through. For training next month, we're going to be hosting a pool operators level one course at Talc. That's through RFABC. And so we have a number of city staff that are going to be attending this course, as well as it is open to the general public for whoever wants to attain that certification as well. And so this will be excellent, because this will give more staff a base level understanding of how pools operate, pool chemistry and kind of keep, allow us to maintain a good, high standard of operations at the pool. Yeah, and as far as our staffing, you know, as spring gets here, minor hockey's winding down, so we're kind of moving into spring, spring cleanup mode at TMC, getting the site ready for, for some of these major projects that are going to be upcoming. And that's all I have for my update at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Brennan? No? Okay, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, and next up, we have Parks and Recreation Acting Director. Let me do that.
Thank you, Your Word Up, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. For myself, through my office, some major time has been spent on the Silver City Days planning for our festivities through my office. Been managing facilities, how those are going to be set up during the different activities that we'll be doing in the gymnasium, Victoria New Room, to name a few, but then also site setup and the various activities on the SPOA again through that. So I've been managing external contractors and how we will implement their services through the Wednesday through Sunday, as well as setting up our managers for the requirements that they will have to undertake in the week leading up to the festivities. At the Aquatic Center, I just wanted to date you on two programs that I had spoken about before. One is the Parents and Talks Lessons that were kind of implemented with Fair. Those were very successful, and so we are bringing them back again, April sixteenth through May third, and doing four one-hour sessions with our aquatic programmer and one of our senior lifeguards. Another one that was successful and was in kind of a pilot program was the Senior Master Swim, so they're going to be continuing that after spring break, and that's for older individuals that don't do swimming lessons, but it is kind of a swimming lessons for them, and that's Wednesdays from two till three. We ran our aquatics registration on March twentieth, after our Leisure Guide was published. The swim lessons filled within ten minutes. Based on the weight lists and in review of operational capabilities, six additional classes were added. One for swimmer one, one for swimmer two, two for preschool one, and two for preschool two. So we tried to add as many as we can, but just with the amount of staff, that's all we do, but it was good to get some more on there. They are obviously very well attended. Addition to that, we have a total of nineteen private lessons booked, so that's eight sessions per individual, and those are scheduled through our senior guards and aquatic programmer. Also, for March and April, all of our birthday party bookings for the facility are full. And that's for the time of wow, but those have also been fully booked and there's no other availability within those months. They are going to do another pilot, another program. They are going to try and do a sensory swim. We do the sensory skate, but they want to try and provide opportunities for those that are unable to attend. It is quite a boisterous facility, so what they are going to try and do is on Tuesdays, either on Tuesday or Thursday, when the pool's not open until noon, they're going to try a clinic from eleven till twelve, no music, no other individuals. Our aquatic programmer can run it, because she is there full time regardless. And so they're, we're going to see how this works and see if we can manage it moving forward and you see what the availability is. And lastly, for them, we are also running all the upper level training courses for lifeguards, so the Bronx Cross Medallion, National Lifeguarding and the Swim Instructor. This is kind of in succession. We're expecting a number of staff to leave for university come the fall. We have a number of water slide attendants that are becoming certified, that can move into the lifeguarding roles. This will provide opportunity for those attending these courses to move into the water slide, and then we have a rotation then full staff, so there won't be any delay in service from there. But that's all I have for you today.
Go ahead, Council Hanson.
Um, two questions. One, in regards to the swim lessons that are full, which is incredible, plus adding additional six classes. Just wondering if we are seeing an uptick in more Roslyn participants with the TRP since prior to that, or is it basically about the same as before the TRP was in place?
I think there is a larger uptick. I don't have the specifics around residents, but we can pull that out and.
Just interesting to see how many kids. And then the other thing regarding the sensory swim, so if it's between eleven and twelve, most of those kids would be, in essence, in school. Or are we looking for just adults as a whole, as a sensor swim, or?
It's just those with special needs, so I'm not sure what their.
I'm just wondering how the communication would get out to the schools or something to like work with them and their.
I think it's with a specific program, yeah, to try it out, and then we can expand from there.
Yeah, no, just wondering how they're kind of, how, did they get from school to go and do that unless it was a specific kind of, then coordinated with the school staff?
Yeah, I think it's coordinated with a specific program that attains some of those needs.
Great, no, thank you. I just wonder, whatever.
Hey, well, last but not least question, we didn't talk about the AquaFit classes.
Yes, I don't have any information on those, but I think those are still really well attended.
Okay, I know, I had to sneak in before.
Yeah, I think the, the crossroads on that is just finding AquaFit certified leaders, right? So that's, I think we would offer as many as we could, but that's where the roadblock is.
Yeah.
Sounds like you need to do a head count.
Okay, if there's no other questions for David, we'll let him, let him go.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the staff reports, and the first report is the reported invoices paid for municipal services for February twenty twenty five. Is there any, thank you, Council Butler, is there a second or please? Oh. Council Benson, I think you had a question.
Yes, I did. There was a check payment to the CBT.
CBT?
Yes, and I was wondering if it was, I have a guess, was that the unused ready?
No.
Oh, because it was.
That was a great question. And again, it's sometimes a reminder, we don't always explain these things, but CBT was a key player in having the airport new building put together. It wasn't grants, but CBT came forward with a interest free grant. So we have that paying off over time. You'll see that in the financials, it will say kind of CBT, it's for the airport. But it's something that we pay every February, fifty thousand dollars to them. I think we've probably got another, I want to say twelve years, I believe.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, I believe that Council Butler moved it. So all those in favor of receiving the report? Thank you. The next item is the Gyro Park Concession Operator Agreement.
Thank you, Your Word Up. Yeah, so for you, it's a recommendation to enter an agreement, enter into agreement with plenty of bubbles for the operation of the Gyro Park concession. That's for the years twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, with an option to renew in twenty twenty seven. Some background on that facility. As you can see in the reports, for a number of years, that was operated by CBS Career Development Services. And for the years from twenty sixteen to to twenty nineteen COVID, and then a year after, was subsidized by the city for that operation because of the organization that they were. Last year, we went out to RFP to try and find a concession operator. We were unsuccessful. There was no bids during the process. CBS also declined to operate. They just didn't have the capacity to do so. And so it didn't operate for a number of months. The Trail Smoke Heaters Organization did come to us with the request to try it out, and we signed that agreement with them. They operated for a few months in twenty twenty four. And we did reach out to them this year and they were not interested in operating it this year, so we did go back out to public RFP, and we did receive three proposals. So through that, the RFP process, there is a number of criteria within RFP, certain criteria is weighted differently, and then there's a sign, and those with the highest points coming out of that is the recommended operator. Certain criteria is weighted differently, um and then there's a sign, and those with the highest points coming out of that is the recommended operator. Uh it was very close between two of them, uh the third proposal, um it was better on the rental that they were providing, but had no other information regarding menu or what they were going to operate, so um there was no um confidence in that. Um but the other two were quite close, um with Bites and Bubbles coming out on top. Um because of their history in the concession, um they have food truck and have been operating that for a number of years. Um their menu also had some healthy options, which is highlighted in our, our R F P. So they're, they're um looking to operate that concession. Um we are asked, the city asked for a rental um fee to operate that, they're um recommending three hundred in twenty twenty five and four hundred in twenty twenty six, um and then in twenty twenty seven that will be negotiated um during a review if there is one. Um this is to help offset costs for that facility, um they are minor, but there is some costs to the city um in electrical, natural gas and solid waste management. Yeah, their menu looks great, um they are looking in terms of schedule, they're looking to meet that um kind of requirement that we have, but I think they're with council's approval, once this goes through the process, looking at getting in there soon if they're able and running it later than they can, so um there might be some, they do op- operate a food truck and there may be a weekend or two that they're away, but we will manage that with them um and how they want to operate that.
Good. It's actually really good to see some interest this year.
Yeah, it was great, yeah, yeah. The two proposals were, yeah, they really well thought out and have thought about their menus, so that's good to see.
Counselor Hanson.
Um is there now in the agreement with them running that there? There's no conflict at Music in the Park if they end up doing an event with food trucks and bringing them in or those kind of things, right?
Is, no, so the food truck, they're going to keep that business, but that's separates and they go to other festivals or however they want to manage that. The concession will be their extension of that business, um but there, so they will operate Bites and Bubbles for Music in the Park, but there may be other vendors there as well.
Okay, I just want to make sure in their agreement that there's still, you know, option that has them having basically the sole
No.
Being able to do anything there, being able to bring in different events and whatnot, having other food vendors be able to do that, thank you.
Counselor Benson, um hours of operation, their, their proposal said to, that they were open for discussion, is that, would that be like during the daytime hours?
Yes, and I think it was just extending um so, yeah, into April and May.
Okay, that's what it meant instead of just the, okay.
So they, they, I think they want to start and um we'll have to discuss with them what they're looking for, but going to the, you know, every weekend in April and May, not just during events.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll uh move to the recommendation. And that is that council authorized staff to enter an agreement with Bits and Bubbles for the operation of the Gyro Park concession for the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six seasons with an option to renew in twenty twenty seven. Someone to want to make that recommendation, Counselor Martin, thank you. Um all those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. Uh okay, item uh C is twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven asphalt road and gravel lane rehabilitation.
I can speak to that as well, so we are recommending to enter into a contract with Power Paving Limited um to honor this contract for those number of years, uh within that, there is also uh options to renew um in the fourth and fifth years exclusively. Some background on this contract, uh Power Paving did hold this um for the previous five years uh with a very similar contract. This is to um provide services for our utility cuts, so when we go in and open the road up to make repairs on our water sewer or drainage, um they would do the asphalt repairs on that, um any smaller paving projects um that we have to rectify any smaller cracking or anything like that, they would also um be um responsible for that program. The, what we try to do is, is estimate the uh uh square meters that would be required in certain sizes and depths so that we can accurately get a um unit rate for that um uh service, that way um we can kind of, it's rather than comparing unit rates, it's comparing the the prices that you see between the two bids, um but we are trying to establish a unit rate so that we can just call them in and give them the rough estimates of what we need and they will bill us accordingly um based on those unit rates and how much they actually do pay for us. Power Paving has been very responsive to us over the terms of contracts, um they do good work. We try and stagger it so they come in, we build up a bit of a list, they'll come in for a few days to give them repairs we need and then they'll come back um when our list has gotten a little bit bigger. Um so we have no issues with the, with the contractor and moving forward and it's nice to have them stabilized for three years and then uh move forward from there.
Okay, um thank you, David. Does Council have any questions? Um Counselor Benson, go ahead.
Um just looking at the quotes, quite the price difference between the two, just wondering is that, was different materials used or?
No, uh actually Power Paving sources, um Terrace, um Southern Paving is the only supplier of asphalt in the area, so they would actually be purchasing their asphalt from um their plant. But i- in our minds, um Terrace is quite a large company, um they are bought out by a um company that's Canada-wide. Um so they have a lot more overhead, they also do a lot more larger high-risk projects. In our minds, it would appear that, you know, this is something if they were the only bidder or somehow lower, um it makes it more than worth, worthwhile for them to do this, but it's harder for them to um complete smaller projects like this in a time that would kind of require it. Um and whereas Power Paving is quite a bit smaller, a little bit more flexible, not as much overhead, and that's where you think the discrepancy is between the, the two costs.
Counselor Hanson, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, so I mean, we all are wary of costs that could be changing every minute, every day, every hour. Um will these fees that are agreed to in our contract, they will not change regardless of asphalt costing tariffs, any of that?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, they're held into the unit rates and we only, so the way this contract is based is we have operational monies um set aside in um in the water sewer funds for repairs, but also um through our transportation um budgets. And so we just spend to that, so we do whatever we can based on those unit rates, um but we don't kind of go over that any year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. Um is there any of the questions? Okay, so the recommendation is that council approved the award of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven asphalt road and gravel lane rehabilitation patient contract to Power Paving Limited in the amount of five hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars over the three-year term exclusive of G S T. Someone line me, thank you, Counselor Butler, is, uh all those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. Okay, and the V is the Bylaw Enforcement Increasement Coverage. And this is a report, I believe, that council has asked for, and we have it before you today. I don't know, um if Tracy, if you would like to speak to it there.
Thank you through the chair, I think the report is pretty self-explanatory, you know, providing a few options for council to consider. Of course, if they do, if council does wish to increase, that would um go over to our uh financial plan. Where you can look at how much it's going to cost us adding that to the budget. Um you know, there's pros and cons of all of them, and it's really what council feels is important at this time, so.
Any questions on that part, Counselor Martin?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to Ms Butler for this report, um I just wanted to bring it to the, all, all, we all do it, want to bring it forward so we can have a robust, just robust discussion about this, because you're right, read the options, it's like, okay, I like that one, I like that one. Okay, that was really good too. Um so yeah, I, I just want, uh I think something needs to be done after hours on the weekends, what I mean after hours, I mean Saturday and Sunday. Uh that's who I was looking at, and I, like I say, I really appreciate this report, thank you.
All right, just one other, I want to thank, um
Go ahead.
Oh, I can see finish it off, let me
Uh Counselor Benson, you had a question?
Um, well, we're of a comment also, um also, I liked in the, I want to talk about retaining current level one, thing that we never really considered was asking if they were willing to work overtime on some weekends, maybe during when there's like busy events or something coming up that or we're seeing a, an increase in activity um downtown, um so thank you, I did consider that being an option.
And, and on that option, um both uh you know, members of our bylaw team said that they, they actually would prefer to do that simply because they have the relationships built up and they can actually get more done.
Yeah.
Um so to them, that's very important, that relationship building.
Counselor Cashal.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair, um perhaps, maybe we're missing one option that I'd like to throw up there. And I'd like to recommend that the report be returned to staff to consider another option, option five point four, which is to assign parking meters to the contractor and to allow for the reclassification of the current parking meter to attend position to a bylaw enforcement officer, officer position. This could be a cost-efficient move for the city, it will allow for weekend parking meter enforcement with potentially increased revenue and also allow for weekend uh bylaw enforcement coverage without incurring overtime. And of course, there'd be no need to hire an additional bylaw officer. So that would be my motion, uh I have a draft here that I've I can read that out again, I can put it on the floor. If you want to copy this, Butler, thank you. Um so if I can make the motion, um through the chair.
Um sure, I appreciate that, can we just hold on to that motion though until we all have a chance to uh talk about the report? And then um I'm fine with putting that motion forward. Does anybody else have any comments or anything about the report? I mean, we're, yeah, we're just trying to get some information on it and, you know, get some feedback, so go ahead, thank you, Counselor Hanson.
You know, I, I really appreciate the effort put into this and um you know, I think when the original motion was made, it was to defer to the Community Safety Task Force for review, um and I think, you know, seeing where we're at now, a lot of this came to the fact that we were having, you know, in, in-town camping set up for weekends, garbage, debris. Um and I think, you know, what, what I would like to see is this deferred to the Community Safety Task Force for also an opinion and review based on the service providers to see what this would look like and then have that opinion come back to council and then review as a whole with um impact and feedback from what um, what we're seeing out there from our service providers, are we seeing? As, as Ms Butler put in here, that we are seeing, um yeah, they're betting very few calls received over the weekend right now. Um does that change as the weather warms up, does that change? Um you know, and, and seeing that things have started to, you know, simmer, simmer down a bit over the weekends um with what's going on, I think from this report, maybe deferring it back to Community Safety Task Force for review. Um and what they're seeing with an update and then putting this back on the table at that time.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
We've, we've taken this to the, obviously the Community Safety Task Force, they don't spend any money, so that's why it came back. He said we're gonna, um seriously, that's what they said, uh that's why we shelved it for a while, but you're right, you absolutely right, Counselor Hanson, this is summer, as temperatures warm up. Um um Sergeant Boyson, which has previously said that activity gets busier in the summertime, so we can bring this back and we can uh see what they say, I think I have an idea where they're going to go with it, but um they might change their minds too, that was, again, that was a long, that was quite a while ago when we did that, I can't remember, six months ago, okay.
It was, uh we wanted to wait six months after the um flood to open to two other.
Okay.
Counselor Benson, it's, yeah, and I think by the next meeting, we, we talked today in our, our meeting, um there's four encampments right now on the Rim Burbank, one, one abandoned and with fresh out coming or between April first and July-ish twentieth, um is when the typically the river levels raise, and um so people that would be there may be moving, so.
So I, I'm just going to jump in here, um sorry if anybody, I missed anybody, but I just want to refer back to the report where, you know, it talks, um it mentions that our bylaw officers have such a good rapport with the people downtown. And it is because of them that we have such an amazing um pickup from the uh homeless uh and unhoused population down there, because they are really good to them and, you know, the unhoused population actually help out Bobby and Ron, um you know, move people along and clean up them. I just want to remind council also that, you know, we just got that government grant, um it's four hundred and sixty thousand around there and in that grant uh is the possibility of having two um outreach nurses, two more outreach nurses on the streets and hopefully, we're really pushing that they are in attendance on the streets on the weekends, because that's where the service is lacking, right? So uh I don't know if um, I just think, I think that it's so important to have that relationship, it really, really is for everybody that's involved and I wouldn't want to disturb that at all, and I, I don't know, I think, you know, what happened at the library. Um you know, when people were camping out there and, and that was because the shelter shut down and people were trying to stabilize and find a place to live again and you know, um and quite honestly, that was the only dry place in trail on that weekend. And knowing that the Sunday was coming and that food was going to be delivered there. So I don't know what that looks like, I don't know that an extra bylaw officer would be able to would change that situation downs, downtown, I mean, so we would have uh a regular bylaw officers Monday to Friday and then hopefully, um and, you know, we're really going to push for it to have the two outreach nurses or staff on the weekends. So I don't know, that's good for that, just to give you some extra information, um so they would have somebody there for the week, right?
Through the chair, I, Nelson, the population is approximately two thousand more than Trail, but they have three full-time bylaw and one part-time bylaw dedicated to a lot of the stuff that we're talking about. Uh Castle Guard at some point went to using the commissioners to do their parking meter enforcement, again, that frees up. That's not correct?
They don't have parking meters.
Or parking enforcement, I'm sorry.
That's a very minimal part of, of their job, yeah, very minimal.
They use the commissioners though for that part.
And they are currently um about two million.
Okay, um so yeah, my motion was basically is to take what resources we have and align them up so that it can be more proactive, as mentioned here in two point eight. In other areas like on-site entrances and animal patrol, we have two full-time bylaw officers. And then there would be an opportunity then to also overlap them for weekends without incurring overtime. Uh it would incur, there's no training cost, because that would, this is all contingent on the current parking meter attendant position being transferred to a, a bylaw officer. And then taking the parking meter uh enforcement and duties and assigning them to a contractor. It's just an option that I thought we should explore, I think there is merit to it, whether or not it's one that we choose. Well, that would be something that uh we would have to consider at a later date.
Uh Counselor Wilson, you came in kind of late, did you have any comments on this report?
Just good to see you guys, no, no comments.
Okay, thank you, um Counselor Benson?
Yeah, uh many times, you know, we don't know what we don't know, I'm just wondering if there's anything in terms of like the parking attendant and bylaw that we don't know, because I, I assume that you would have.
Yeah, I, I
Yeah, there's a few things, um number one, uh this is an unized position, so the idea of just saying, oh hey, by the way, you're the contract owner position, that doesn't usually go very well, um and again, two, we speak about um Nelson, uh they spent a lot of their time doing the parking meters, they also charge two dollars an hour, so I'm not sure where Trail is at for wanting to uh go to rates that would be that level or wanting to increase your rates. Rates themselves are not very high now, so if that's something you want to consider to pay for, for bylaw and or have coverage on Saturday. You know, those are also things I think that they just need to be prepared for, uh those that are parked down here on Saturday.
Uh, those are parked down here on Saturday, knowing now that there would be a parking meter, parking tickets and those sorts of things. So there's things to consider. Nothing wrong. With um coming back with the motion to to look at it. Just one of the challenges will be the idea of. Of saying, hey, by the way, we're gonna do this and we're gonna contract that out. That's a not an easy thing to do under that union contract. That's the only, um, that's a that's a major hurdle that we would have. Not that it's not possible, but it's just a a big hurdle.
Basically, did you have a comment?
No, I would just, you know, um, as Colin has said that, uh, you know, our union is not gonna want to give up union work. Um, so we would be, you know, contracting out union work. That's gonna be a big uphill challenge for us.
And I appreciate that. I definitely want to support our union. So I don't want to. Yeah, I understand where you're coming from with that, but really the position, the union position is still. Uh, secure. It's just being transferred to a different job title to allow us to take full advantage of. Of uh, having two bylaw officers. So that does leave the gap um. For the parking meter attended to position. So I guess the option would be. Do we want to look at that as a contract position or do we want to hire? Um, uh, another full time uh bylaw person.
Yeah, what I'm saying too is you cannot make that. A contract position, the parking attendant. That is union work. It is owned by the union.
Okay.
We we can't all of a sudden just say, we're gonna take and have, you know, you made it into a bylaw enforcement officer, but we're gonna contract out the parking. That's not gonna work. They're gonna want us to have two bylaw enforcement officers and a parking attendant and all the union positions.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm not, that doesn't, you know, I'm I'm okay with that as well. I just, to me, I'm looking at cost efficiencies here, kind of putting my taxpayer hat on. And looking at duties in general. I mean, there's a lot more to bylaw than than parking meter. Uh, enforcement and writing parking tickets, right? So that other part is the part that I think we're all talking about, you know, dealing with our on houses and. On site premises and animal control, things that you mentioned in your report. So. Uh, anyway, I appreciate that. I will withdraw the motion at this point. I appreciate the feedback from Mr. McClure and this Butler. I'll leave it as that, but uh. Uh, I my point being is that I do think we need that additional bylaw officer. I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, um, just, did you have your hand up, Counsel Hanson?
Yeah, I just was gonna say that I appreciate the fact that our um, our bylaw is willing to work weekends and work overtime. And I think. You know, if we were to go any route, in my opinion, I think, you know. As we see an uptake in that, seeing if they would work on some weekends or part time or whatever, just so that we keep things. No one knows when someone's gonna be there on a weekend and then no one has time to go and set up on a three o'clock on a Friday afternoon, knowing someone's gonna bother them for three days. And I think if it's a sporadic um overtime that we do here and there. It might keep people on their toes and not wanting to have people set up shop for seventy two hours. So I would be more inclined to go with motion of, you know, sporadic, um, as we see an uptake in, you know, occupants downtown. Uh, to have uh our bylaw do some overtime and go that route this year to see or for the next little bit and then reevaluate.
Counselor Benson.
Um, um, totally agree. Just wanna, and this might be a question for closed, but. Um, just thinking about weekends, number one, I don't want it to be a. A situ like I think that these two have. Um. I guess not emotional, but like there, it's a pretty tough job. And at the end of the week, I don't want to see this being like an every weekend thing of leaning on them. I think they deserve their time off. Um, but I I really like the idea of kind of like sporadic. Um, checks of.
As needed.
As needed. Um, and then, but falls into like questions too in terms of their um. Like the working alone or an isolation policy with the two of them on ensuring that they have. That there it's kind of like a package deal or there's something, someone at the city that can be there um to assist the community. And then my question, which might be for close, I don't know. Do they have the same job? Are they the same job?
They are not the same job, but they're completely separate jobs.
Okay, thank you.
And I suggested we could, we will take that back and and sort of provide an addition to the report just on here. Here's all my biggest word.
I'm I'm satisfied with with the discussion here today. I don't, the report doesn't need to be returned. With my motion to go back and just look for this other. This other piece, which I hopefully articulated well enough to to make my point. Uh, I'm satisfied with our discussion and uh. And I appreciate the report. Thank you.
And and I think where we go from here is we receive this report, but if if, you know, a counselor or um, the task force. Has a recommendation to bring forward, then that would be where it goes next.
Okay, so if there's no other questions or comments. Um, the recommendation is that council consider and resolve that council, sorry, resi- receive the report by law enforcement increased coverage. Date at March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five for information. Counselor Hanson. All those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you. So E, we have an application for rezoning of thirteen ninety nine Birch Avenue and that report will come from Tracy.
Oh.
Sandy, but this. Thank you, through the chair. Uh, this is a rezoning application to allow a short term rental on property located at thirteen ninety nine Birch Avenue. Uh, the applicant indicates that an existing basement suite is used for family purposes about one third of the year. And they want to rent the suite short term um at other times of the year. Property currently has two off street parking spaces in the rear, just sufficient. Um, in order for the applicants to provide short term rentals, they have to rezone. To R three A. Um, at this time, staff is recommending that they propose zoning them at new forward by doing the required first and second readings at the April fourteenth. Um, meeting followed by a public hearing on April twenty eighth to garner any interest that might affect the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Any questions? I like that, Counsel Hanson.
In reviewing the newly updated short term rental um rules, I I feel this is great because it actually conforms to what the new rules are for populations of ten thousand. That you have to have a primary residence to have a rental, short term rental suite. We are not at ten thousand yet, but we are. Approaching that. So I think being in line with what the legislation is, having that as a. Uh, right, primary residence with a short term rental and knowing the property and the location, there are numerous rentals. There's a triplex energyplex directly across the street from this property. And the upper street has a lot of um, uh, parking. It's a very wide section of road just beyond that corner. So I very much support it.
Any other comments? Okay, the recommendation is that council recommend the required readings of zoning amendment by law. Number twenty nine fifty two be considered at the April fourteen, twenty twenty five regular council meeting. Someone to meet that? Thank you, Counsel Butler. All those in favor? That was Carrie. Thank you. And then we have Mr. McClure. For the up there being expenditures budgets.
Okay, and thank you, Mayor Jones and Council. I um. Got this out to council. I did have a little bit memo. I was gonna walk through a few of the numbers just uh on sort of what we're seeing in twenty twenty four currently. Understanding that, well, they're just preparing for the audit right now. They're, they will be on the ground. We, they're always asking for information, but they'll actually be good for doing audit next week. So uh, again, there was a caveat that when I put that projected number in there that. Could change, uh, if they find something or we missed something, but there's trying to find all this, uh, what's happening this year. So a a couple of things that I just want to know right off the bat is um looking at the projected for twenty twenty four. Right off the bat taxes and you'll say, oh, no, it is like in there, we budgeted sixteen fifty five, but we're only at, you know, sixteen four twenty seven. So what's happening there? And I think we discussed it a number of times that, uh, you know, which is their right tech had gone through a process with B C assessment and had had a number of appeals on some of their property. And they were successful on um having their property lowered somewhat and not a big amount when you consider the huge draw that they're are assessed at. But it did have an effect and it was multiple years that they were dealing with. So that's why you're seeing that drop in the current year of that uh. Sixty thousand dollars is the number. Uh, so that's one I wanted you to be aware of. Uh, sales and services, um, that's a great number, sir. So. You know, very positive. I think that I heard from from Mr. Moorhead when we have people sneaking into the uh, to the aquatic fit, uh, you know, that tells you how popular they are. And we're seeing the, we're seeing the revenues for that. And uh, and and overall, when I think back. Couple of years ago, when the council was first in in the chairs and they agreed to, you know, some of the incentives that we gave to get our our. Love lifeguards up to a certain number and the benefit that we see from that, it's been significant, you know, the possibility of even being able to add additional. Um, you know, such sessions and that sort of thing. So really seeing that. And then again, you couple that with um. Uh. The T R P change in particular with Roslyn and I do have, I don't like a full month or I think we have about. The current house, so I have for point twenty four. Uh, Roslyn was at um, at fifteen percent, uh, at a at a hundred and five in twenty twenty um. Four. So that's a, you know, a big jump from what we were getting from that before because of the fact that. They were outside. Now, I I do admit that I think that people were clever because one of the things I noticed is that. The rest, Roslyn residents were finding maybe a way to be a trail or some other resident because sometimes on some of the numbers, they're sort of like. Hey, there's been a drop in our trail residents and now Roslyn's has popped up. Now, again, I'm just saying that having them inside, I think people become clever. Uh, and I'm trying to do that, but we've definitely seen the positivity not only between the communities, but having that eliminated has had a very positive effect on. The number of kids that we see, all kinds of sports related on this, soccer or or swimming lessons. I mean, again, even those attending the gym. So. Seen some very good uh positive numbers there. Uh, sales or other revenue from other sources. Uh, one here, you might say, well, hey, wait a second. Was it number like a million dollars higher earlier? It's like, yes, it was because I had, we got that. Uh, donation from an emergency foundation, but we only used a portion of it. Put the other portion into deferred revenue to then carry it forward for the capital project. Uh, so that was one that we were looking at. Well, my third quarter report, you might say, hey, wait a second, that number has dropped quite a bit. It's like, yes, it has because we we knew that we would reallocate those funds. Um, again. Uh, positive numbers overall, uh, some of that's um, you know. Will we see that carry forward? We hope so. And that's just some of the things that are taking some pressure off what we would see on our budget this year is in twenty twenty five is an increase in in those numbers. And so I'll kind of again focus on twenty twenty four for now. Um. The uh unconditional grant was actually under budget. Uh, and then all of a sudden, the province in December, when I was away, uh, sent us a check for fifty thousand dollars just to top it up. So that was a a really positive for for us. Uh, one that was unexpected. Can't guarantee it. That's why I have a little sip of number going forward is even lower than what we budgeted. Uh. Grants uh conditional uh get pretty much in line with what we were budgeting. One thing that we did have. Uh, in council, maybe I've been aware of under the uh climate action funding is that they funded us three years in one. And so that's one of the things that we'll see twofold. One is the budget was ninety, uh, the ninety thousand, we got two seventy five, that two seventy five, uh, we end up putting in, you know, into the. The reserve. So that's one thing we'll see down the number side. Uh, and interesting, you know, ahead of the year, the interest rates stayed higher for longer. But when we look going forward, we will see that that's not the case right now. We know that we're in, we're in tight for what we will believe to be. You know, funding. And I'm sure that's something maybe I should share a screen as well. So just start with different. But um, what I've been focusing on, it's basically the column A U and A W. Which is the point twenty four budget numbers for operations, remembering that we have sort of compartmentalized. That'll be the budget. We already taken care of utilities back in November, December. Looked at capital a little while ago and now we're at the operations budget. Um. And so I don't know if you guys want a couple of minutes just to to reiterate at all or just want me to start conquering and we start from the top again. This, as I mentioned before, this is where you'll see under uh row ten, you see the differences in what uh expected for budget and what the projected answer is for that. Um, and sales of services, you you will see the numbers there. Uh, mainly related to the income that we're earning from increased usage at both the brink and. Again, uh, just talked a bit about the grants unconditional, uh. And sometimes there's things that each community gets a small community grant. So this is the small community grant, but we also get some traffic by sharing revenue. So this is two. Funding streams account together. And uh, this particular year, uh, we've got a top up at the end of December. Again, doesn't never expect that to happen, but it did happen. So that gave us a bit of. Uh, we're talking about our grants unconditional or our grants conditional. So uh, this is where I was speaking about the fact that we received. Instead of ninety thousand dollars, which has been sort of what the number has been for climate action planning, but we received three years in one. It's one of the reasons why they said, we'll give you this money, but we also want to make sure you spend the previous money that you had. Just while we came to council and said, hey, we need to, you know, get the trucks and the lift and that sort of thing. Uh, and just to kind of tie that off. So if you look under same. Um, kind of A U A W columns, but if you look down under row forty five. You'll see that the budget was two, uh, was ninety thousand dollars. And uh, the amount that we received was two hundred and seventy five. So again, just in that idea that they were giving us three years. And then you will, and when you look out, you'll see that there's a number of years that it's it's now not there. Uh, I talked about interest income, a a very successful year over budget, which again is always beneficial. Earned that kind of. Interest income. That is on our bank deposits. And so we're very grateful for that. And when I go down here, we go into row twenty seven, which is general government and sort of where our planning is. It's our corporate installation, it's finance. It's our communications. That's our group there. And you can see that we're slightly under budget, but one of the reasons why. Is that the province had given us a hundred and eighty seven, eighty six thousand dollars to help out with uh dealing with the. The new zoning, we're getting O C Ps in place. So we used about half of the money that we got from that. So. Say we got a hundred and eighty, I think we spent ninety some. So we've got ninety four thousand that'll get carried forward into twenty twenty uh five. Help us with finishing off the O C P and uh other planning type projects we leave out. Major, uh, and we'll be curious because I'm still working, as I said, with the auditors and the audits, uh, is protective services. Um, the amount of overtime this year was just uh unbelievable. So this has usually been a place where the city has had some benefit and then we've seen. You know, some of that surplus funds being able to be allocated to different reserves. Not the case this year, even though. Uh, which is again, been very surprising to me because we were in an average of around seven to eight members over the. In twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, but in twenty twenty four, we're at ten and yet the overtime went up significantly. Now, part of that, I believe, is that. I think they ran lean because they couldn't get anybody to come because there wasn't enough R C M P officers. And so I think with some of those being available, that's why we're seeing the effect of that. But you could see that instead of being potentially what you may say at having ten members out of instead of fourteen, that we would have a surplus there, but that was all part of uh. Being, well, the main factor there is overtime for the members. Uh, engineering and public works uh down quite a bit. Twofold. One is is that uh we had budgeted for a half year of our general manager municipal services and that didn't happen. Yes, we had some. Uh, lifts to some employees or staff kindly into the the kind of sharing monthly of being in charge of the public works. Uh, but that's one bit, but the biggest factor really is, well, two biggest factor is no snow. And uh, and again, almost, and we've been reluctant, of course, just to sort of, hey, what do we do with the budget? Because even this year, not a lot of snow, but you just never know what's gonna happen between November and December. And December is, you know, usually a big time, a lot of holidays in there and you get a big dump of snow and all of a sudden, you know, you're saying, hey, we got savings. It's like, actually, we don't have savings. This year, again, I say that for twenty twenty four, we had savings. Another uh major component to that is. Is we don't, that's a, that will be a factor on equipment charges, on sand, on those types of charges for contractors. Maybe if we have to grow the, you know, the downtown, cleaning it up. Didn't have a lot of that, obviously, but we we keep the employees employed. So we spent a lot of time, uh, you know, in the parks, doing tree work, doing uh leaf work, much like. You heard from the crews today, being able to work on some of that. And yet we also remember that we are. Out there when it gets this freeze thaw that we have to uh run some sand down, especially unless trail and places like that, because we don't need to have people slipping and sliding. So. Uh, those are the factors where you will notice that also parks and rec is over budget. So there's sort of sometimes those um. Offset it. So it's like, hey, we're under in public works and says, yes, but we're we're over in parks. And one of the factors will be in being over in parks will be the fact that. The team, instead of public snow and being charged into transportation budget, there. And being charged into transportation budget, they're in the parks doing that work and being charged into parks. Uh and at the same time, parking record has some pressure on it uh just for the fact that we had needed more staffing to be able to keep up with. Aqua fit swimming lessons, uh you know, we had all these big, big boons in there. So again, uh those are the big ones that um, you know. Was a factor for where uh parks and rec ended up for the year. Uh parks, uh sorry, airport, uh you're maybe saying, well, what's going on there for the airport? It's like, well, I don't know. We had budgeted quite a bit of money, both revenue and expense for the avgas. And with the um way that. Civic coastal has been doing it and being able to get in, they've been able to get in on the same tank of gas to get back home. So we have adjusted that. You'll notice that in twenty twenty five when we get there that, hey, the budget's lower than it was the previous year, which. Bilicari pressures, those are not usually the things that you see, but that's one of the main pieces of working with the airport manager and saying, hey, that's lower what uh. We expect with avgas um from Pacific Coast today. Then we have the library grant transfer. That's that's uh again, one of those ones that um. Council agrees to, it's preset, we just we just apply that. Uh sewer tax transfer, water tax transfer. Again, you see those lenders are bang off for what we budgeted because that's what we charge for. And that's just what we put into those particular utilities. You'll see the same idea there for the capital projects as we can, you know. Our taxation gets put towards capital. Uh yes, you can hope on grants, but that's not always as easy. You only need to have up. Upgrades happening and so you still have an ongoing funding going into uh capital projects. Equipment reserve and you may remember last time when I was talking to the council, one of the things that I noted when we were doing our equipment. And so just to be clear, we we have a rate. So if you use the 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 backer truck or you use the snow pod truck. We want to capture a rate that allows for not only the cost of insurance and maintenance, fuel and oil. But a portion of that needs to be able to be put away. And that's why we have this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars going into uh reserve. So that that funding is available um to purchase the next vehicle because these vehicles wear out. Now, when we want to, when we were looking through the fleet, I was, I said, well, what about, you know, some of the supervisors' trucks or the bylaw truck or the engineering truck? There's no charge going up for those individuals. So we have started that, we did it in twenty twenty four and we will continue that. You know, ongoing, but that also provided a bit of a lift in twenty twenty uh four. So we're looking at um an additional uh forty eight thousand dollars being allocated into the equipment reserve in twenty twenty five. We had the same amount in in sorry, in twenty twenty four. In twenty twenty five, we have kept the number uh as it has been, but we'll see uh as our results go. In what we get to be in the twenty twenty five. Talked a bit about climate action reserve. You'll see that uh we, they paid us uh in ahead. And so now you can use that funds for this year and the next two years. That's why you're seeing a going over columns into twenty five and twenty six. If there's no number there, then it picks up again because I'm expecting that they will provide a funding uh when they get it to us. Uh old bridge reserve, I mean, it's kind of fascinating. We talked about that before, where you have to give them to be half a million, you know, it'll be six hundred thousand. And that's, I think, very uh diligent of council to be able to kind of have that money put away. It's earning some interest income, it builds. And then when the day comes, uh it won't be a case of like, what are we going to do? It's like, well, we've got some need to to do some of that work. Again, when you look down at the bottom, combination of higher revenues and some lower expenses right now before we. Finished it out, like I said, we're looking at just over a million dollars there, you'd always say to serve to us. Now, under twenty twenty five, um the budget number. For taxes is basically the same as what uh it was last year. That's because right now I have a sitting at zero because we was waiting to talk with council. You look down on the left hand corner. Um you will see that I I've got a zero in twenty twenty five and I use three percent for the years out just to sort of. Kind of give you an idea of what the effect is. Um so once we decide on a tax increase that council is comfortable with. That obviously will have an effect generably as well. Um but uh right now, you can see as as we'll walk through this. But you can see that we're sitting at a uh a deficit of uh six hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. Now, there's some tweaks that need we'll talk about in. So uh so that's what I gave you the warning. Well, wait a second, how come we're very close to the twenty twenty four border taxes? Why is twenty twenty five the same? It's because I have not applied any increase to the uh to the taxation. Uh to have bumped up sales of services. And one of the things I also want to remind council is is that you may say, well, why not? Why isn't that higher? And the reason why is because we took away some funding from uh the fact that on our utility bills, we no longer have a fee. For garbage. So that was one of the things we talked about before, saying, okay, we get about ninety thousand dollars, but we are going to kind of cover that inside what happens in our. In our overall budget. So that's why we're like, well, hey, we we could maybe go higher uh for sales of services if you're looking at what the results were in twenty twenty. Four, but one of the things that's pulling us back is that we no longer have that garbage income coming in. Uh more in line there with the with the other revenues from sources, we bumped that up. And again, I've kind of taken the number that I see for the small community grant that I'm comfortable with. I again, is it possible that we will get another lift? Always possible, but I didn't budget for that, being conservative. Uh grants conditional, when we talk about these grants and they are. The grant that we get from through the R D K B service to operate the cemetery, so on three hundred thousand dollars. Uh we also get the funding from Beaver Valley, Warren Field, and now from. Uh Roslyn for that TRP. So that's kind of what we classify that as. So two few other things that come in as grant money. One is the keeper prisoner program. That I don't necessarily know their fifth grants, but that's where it's been put for a while. Well, we lock people up and then when they're in the jail, then the province that they're waiting for. Certain things, they provide a funding source for, you know, the fact that we've got guards coming in and doing things. It's not, it's not a money maker, it's just. A keeper prisoner, K O P, yeah.
People are elf.
Well, yeah, and and a lot of that's changing. Some of the revenue used to be higher, but especially during COVID, a lot more. Not bullying people before they go to an actual judge. It's 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 on video. I think so. A lot of that is changing, so. Yes, you can see that I've uh dropped our interest income uh down. I I I'm hopeful that we'll be in that number. It's not as much of a factor overall, we have the numbers and but definitely. Going to see what happens here with, get another week until we kind of find out what tariffs appearing. There was some. It's bubbling up. There may not be this blanket twenty five percent, which I think would be great for all of us. Uh so we'll but we'll wait and see how that kind of plays out. But I I know that if that does happen or we are feeling pressured, then. Ten is probably, I think Hannah's going to lower this even further, so. Yeah, you maybe have some different thoughts from B C Central, maybe or. Same, stable, yes, but we're not, yeah. So anyway, that's a big, there's a drop there for what we expected. Uh I will talk about and and this is maybe where you saw it, hopefully read my memo. Uh so there's a couple of. So you'll see how some of these asks here. Uh there's some numbers in there and just remembering uh public center counting is different. And it's always a strange thing to try to explain, especially to business people. They're like, what are you telling me about that you're taking revenue from. You know, below the line or in your equity kind of thing and then bringing it up back into your operations, but that is the common way of doing things, using surpluses. Uh you know, obviously, we see that more on the capital side when we're doing the different equipment reserve or the. Grant gas tax reserve or just the capital reserve, we're always bringing those funds in to be able to uh cover the capital. This is one of the one here that you don't always want to be using or shouldn't be using your general reserves. For funding, because all that means is that you're not charging enough taxes and eventually you're going to catch up with you. Much I think that's one of the things that's been affected on the regional district is that they really put a lot of pressure on their reserves. They'd use them over time. And so as we get into now, they're like, we don't have any reserves to use anymore. And now we've got to increase the requisition. That's sort of what's hitting our E K B. So this is not really a factor for the city, uh and I'll talk a bit more exactly. Um. So I will just leave that, those allocations at the top right now and and we'll just go a bit through uh what we're seeing for the general covering. Uh right now, this is um, these numbers here are in line. Uh with, again, just the current services that we have. Uh I guess I've talked about we manage our planning, but that's not in those numbers right now. I have gotten down at the bottom, but. This is the current staffing that we have and to be able to promote the and take on the services that we currently provide. So this is where this budget is at. Um. Not much really that I had to say there. I did comment on why the airport is lower. So the one of the reasons that the. Other revenue from other sources will be lower is because we would have been charging for the avgas, but we're not earning as much aviation fuel. Then revenue comes down, expense comes down. So that's where this all starts. One thing I will say under column, sorry, row forty and forty one is you will notice there's a swamp. And council may hearken back to when we talked in uh November, December, saying, hey, we've got this taxation coming in and we're putting it into. Uh sewer, but maybe the water needs it. So this is where we did that change. Also shows as we go forward, there's still a bit of room. Uh but that's why you're wondering why this is different from last year. That's because we decided to make that change. And I kind of got that flowing out ongoing for the next five years at least. Uh another factor in why we're needing, you know, when I said we don't have any of that garbage revenue anymore that we used to collect through those fees. Putting pressure on taxation increase. Uh but the other thing that we have been doing is adding a hundred thousand dollars each year into that capital uh grant. And just knowing that every year it doesn't get cheaper to do capital and try and keep up with it. And so that's why we've kind of had that a hundred thousand onwards. So that'll be another pressure factor. So even right off the bat, keeping things uh stable. Yes, we had collective agreement uh agreement increase. But we've also got to cover for the the monies for garbage and also for putting money into the capital reserve. Uh forty five, as I've talked about already, just the the fact that we got it up front. Well, that's why we don't have any numbers in there for climate action. Bridge reserve is just carrying on. And there may come a time that council may say, you know, is a million or a million and a half enough money to put there? And then that might be something that's. That they may want to turn that tap off. Uh so at the end of the day, before any, uh this is somewhat. Not fair because I've got about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenue above, but you're saying there's a deficit of three hundred and seventy six thousand under uh net operations. Now, what I have on row seventy two is succession planning for corporate officer. And the I T assessment home comes. I had raised that you had some assessment done on our I T, we have some work to do. Uh we also need to look at succession planning. Very sad that I can't lock her in a cage in her office. But our G M is uh saying that she has had enough. And we knew that when she was kind of took over, just we need to be prudent and we need to be wise. And this is an area, so this wouldn't be a time when you're got some reserve money or that you can use as COVID funds that have been sitting there, other people have used theirs up. You know, being able to do I T, uh getting uh staff prepared to have coverage in case someone goes away or is off sick. Those are all good reasons to use a COVID funding. So this would be a way to take pressure off taxpayer. Funds that we've already received from the government to use for these exact type of projects. So that's, that's why that is there. Uh again, on the memo, there was a couple of small asks. I I mean, I had a couple of suggestions. They're very small, but I also wanted council to be aware. Because I don't want to be saying, yes, we'll just go off and put a commemorative sidewalk in if council's like, well, wait a second, we're not interested in that. So that's part of the discussion I hope to get from council as to direction. And I think historical society, they do a good work and they kind of add. Glow this year just because it was a bit of a bigger ask over the previous years as you would have looked through on their financials. And then the last one there uh is the creation of a manager of planning and climate action. And we have talked about this quite a bit. Uh we have, um I think the means and the ability, especially with that. Climate funding that we have to be able to kind of assist in this job, again, take pressure off the taxpayer. But I really believe that the city of trails on the cusp of having a lot of development and um. I know that the three that sit here as staff, at least right in this, this, this other table, um we're not planners and we do the best we can. And uh and and we, I think we do a good job, but it is sometimes overwhelming with everything else you're doing and you don't want to make a mistake. And I think we want to be open for business. Uh and I also believe that part of having some of this planning is is to look at what are our fees that we're charging? Uh not to be able to try to gouge, but there is sort of that cost of doing business if you're going to do. Uh variances, you know, what are our rates compared to others? And that also would take the pressure off of the taxpayer funding that. And it would be putting on for those that are using the service. Right now, I I feel quite comfortable that, you know, if we're going to do this, obviously, we're not getting some tomorrow. It's going to take a few months. So you can see that sort of got a half year and then we're looking at what a a full time individual would be, remembering this would be a wage plus. Uh pension benefits, all those sorts of things they told. So after everything is said and done on that side, uh you would see that we're currently right now without adding any tax increase. That we're sitting at about six hundred and sixty three thousand dollars um as a deficit. Now, right now, about a four, four point two five would make that bounce. So that's just giving you sort of that ballpark kind of idea if you're wondering, what am I comfortable with as, you know, an increase for the taxpayer in twenty twenty? Five, it would be that 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 amount for the four point two five would be able to uh to some, to follow that. And that also, again. As we talked about before, uh up in line nineteen, it would be remiss saying, hey, we're looking at using two hundred thousand dollars of COVID funding. To help with the succession planning and the I T projects, uh with using thirty thousand of that climate action surplus that we've been provided. Uh to be able to assist with the funding of this job for a period of time. And um and then finally, we in the past, there use that use of the general surplus. And part of that was fifty thousand dollars because it's called kind of classified as a special council special project. So when you have something you want to do. Uh this is an area that allows you inside the five year financial plan, so that having to bring something back, you can say, hey, what if we, can we use some of that funds? And then sort of how uh we, for example, we uh. Not understand camp doing some of those things. Anyway, that's where uh I we're sitting. I um. I I I deeply apologize that you didn't have the shoot to sort of read over and look over. My goal would be to get a bit of direction from council and we will be finalizing and and we won't be final. But certainly with the audit starting on March thirty first, by the time we get to uh April fourteenth. You know, if there's anything that they're finding that there's some big changes, I will know about that and be able to point out. And uh on top of that, you know, if there's any other amendments that uh that, you know, we're not, you know, it's always good looking at the budget. And tinkering and making sure that I've got everything in there correctly. And I. Would, again, I'm curious on where council's at for some of the things like the historical society increase, again, minor and legion.
Council dancing, go ahead. Um, not so much on the historical society and Legion, but just overall in terms of like grants, like those won't be the only two coming. Our way this year. How do we, is there a way we can know like what we, like the one, we had one on agenda coming up? Like, how do we keep track of like what we have in the bank of what we've budgeted for for like grants this year?
Um, great question. Uh and that also, I think, was another part of the memo that we hadn't talked about yet was. Sitting inside here will be, I think, uh last year, I think they were, I want to say it's a hundred and twenty between, yeah. Between the two numbers. I didn't change that, so that's there. And um that that could, I guess, part of these ones were a bit different, that they weren't coming in as a grant aid, but it's sort of just a. Uh part of operations a bit more, instead of coming in asking for us. I guess they certainly could, that could be, there's another avenue that we could say, hey. You know, we want to work with you, but here this is the avenue we'd like to see you go through. Um.
Oh, okay. See, that's where I I chip this is, okay.
Yes. And these were just ones that came in.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, well, it's a, but it's a fair statement, you know, where do you start to expand these ones and not have, say, what about the grant today? Certainly, the Trail Historical Society has been something that's been embedded in your budget for a very long time. And you can kind of see that from their financials of like, you know, what grant they've asked for on different years sort of thing. So uh that's a fair statement of what I know. And again, part of it was, it's pretty small. So when you look at, you got, you know. You know, three million dollars in your year uh or four million dollars, I should say, in your public works budget. I'm very comfortable that four thousand dollars to reviewing aside, uh at the memory of sidewalk, that's something that we could do. More of it was about getting in front of you with the letter, their ask, and whether or not it's even something that you're you're going to through.
So if the grant and aid comes in in like September.
Right.
Where does it come out of?
So inside.
Inside of general government?
Yes, yes. And it's a great point, and I, again, that I'm sure that Mr. Luchini is, if my door closed crunching numbers when we've had the recent grant needs. They haven't updated the spreadsheet that we usually. Mr. Chini is, if my door closed crunching numbers when we've had the recent grant needs, that I haven't updated the spreadsheet that we usually better on providing you, um where I'm saying like, hey, here's where our budget is. And you know, here's who's already given given funds, because you know, we've already went some money to uh jail crowd, so to think. So that will be coming. That's that's a kind of a fault of mine of not having that even in the current document that says, yeah, we've got the same amount of of budget that's there that we've been giving out the last.
Thank you.
So, sorry, just following up on that though. So that doesn't show up.
It is, but it's sort of what I was saying, when I provided the numbers, this is keeping the same number of staff, the same services that we provide. One of them inside that is, hey, we've got X amount of money for economic development. We also have amounts of people providing through the grant aid. So that hasn't been cut. Yes. So, but it's a great question. Thank you for raising me, making that, allowing me to make that clarity.
I'll probably ask it next year too.
I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that because we get grant needs all the time, I'm sure that you'll see that ahead of time. You're like, oh yeah, that's in general.
Uh any other questions or comments or suggestions or council Hanson?
I just have a question. Um I I very much like the Canadian make believe. Um but if, do we have a policy around that? I just, I'm wondering, because there's so many different, you know, groups and and supporting types of things. Do we have a policy on painting sidewalks? You know, I've seen that um pride ones done, I've seen, right? I just wondered if we actually as a city had a policy on approval for doing that or does it last all year? Is it something that we just, you know, approve just as they come in and and just make that decision?
Yeah, based on Mr. Chee, who's been here a long time, says we don't have a policy that it's not.
Yeah, and I think the thing with painted sidewalks is you paint once, you're gonna be painting it again, right? So there's the initial cost, but then it becomes ours. And maybe, yeah.
I don't have time to counsel, so I can take a decision.
Yeah, well, yeah, the staff would not make that decision.
It's a question, that's.
Thank you.
Um yeah, just while you're ruminating, because I know you haven't had a full weekend of feeding this, which again, I apologize for. But one part of my memo was just sort of getting some direction from council on our economic development. You know, a few things that come to mind and um part of it is, is that the amount of money that we have up there. You're in a place where you need to basically hire like their own economic development. They're not, you know, I know we've got different groups vying for things. I I will note that, again, sometimes concerned if you've got groups that aren't going to be able to do that work, sure, that's fine. Uh you could hire a contractor, maybe to do some economic development work. I just also to say, we're not pinned into this is what we're always doing. And I I would tell you as well, and I kind of said in my memo, I get a, there's a fear for me that we're actually funding just operation, general operations of things, not actually getting resolved on economic development. And I know that those are maybe uh not fair comments, but that's certainly what might be where if you were saying, yes, set up this meeting as a group with council, as a workshop, just to ask questions and to find out and have discussion, that might be a place where you might get some comfort level or you know, a decision of like, well, you know, maybe this year we'll do something different. And you're, this is, this is your budget, your funds to be able to allocate.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead, Council. Oh, I was just gonna say, I I mean, I think keeping it as a place of work for economic development is a good plan because regardless, we need to have someone. But I feel that these different groups, they're asking us to give them money for the betterment of trail based on trail taxpayers. But I think that we need to then have an opinion and direction on how this money gets allocated as opposed to the separate boards. So I would think without some sort of representation and, you know, agreement from us on how this money gets spent. I I I'm of the opinion we hold it until there is some collaboration in an actual plan of how the city of Trail gets consulted on how the mons money gets spent and reporting on where we're seeing the meeting come back to us.
So when you say that, it would sound like the workshop ideas, which I think is what Mayor James and Council are, I've been to you now before. Let's get that in action. That is what I'm hearing.
I agree. I think it's important. And I think it showed during the presentations that there wasn't real guidelines there, but we were looking at as for as council. We didn't uh release us have a format, I guess it is, for them to come back and deliver what they're um doing in the community. And I, well, all three of them presented differently.
Yes, but it had made it clear that they signed a contract and we're gonna report on it, we're gonna report on it. And only one of the entities actually did. And so I know that one has had its own challenge. And then you've got a board sort of stepping into, you don't have any staff. And that can make a difficult thing. Um you you try your best to try and say like, hey, this is where you signed an agreement and you, you know, be best to come to council and say, here's what I did with the funds towards economic.
Yeah.
Council Benson. I don't know about the rest of you, but I feel that until we have that recording from the two other entities, I don't want to do a workshop where I learn what they do, because I feel like I've sat through that workshop two or three times now through just different other organizations on. I'd rather like get the the details of what we asked for through the last meeting before.
Before we even actually have.
Just a better understanding of.
Okay, have we not received enough information yet? They they knew that they were coming in to present delegations. They came in, they presented. But we have enough information now to kind of make our mind up. What what are we looking more for?
So we, with the money we allotted them last year, what did they?
Well, exactly. But that's my whole point, Council Benson, is that they had an opportunity to come in and give us that information. And they they did not do that. So, I mean, what more did we have to do? Do we have to kind of take their hand and lead them down the path of telling us what we need to know when they should be doing that anyway? It's on them to do that.
And and through the chair, um this is where, again, some staff falling down. Uh there was a motion that was made by council that that we should have a workshop with them, you know, for the pendulum of this plan. So that was brought up and it's like, oh, we haven't done that. So again, the money is still in the budget and we can still tive it up. But I think that that's where uh what I'm hearing is, yeah. Interested in doing that, but also don't come in with, you know, certain what you should have done, come in what you're doing. And if 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 anything, any characters hired, sort of this back and, you know, it's like, if you're gonna come in as a group working together, then let's let's make some terms for that. Council Martin, I was curious, uh it would have been an open uh meeting. Did the letter come to R D K B East End Services?
Uh East End Services last week was totally on the ground for. The Janelle Fire.
Okay, so nothing came forward for weather discussion. Because they were talking about what they were doing with their um economic development as well as the plan. And so it sounds like that became a larger issue of discussion and pushed some of the other agendas out there.
Okay. So what is, what do you guys think?
Yeah, a lot there.
Yeah.
So do you want a number from us today, Colin, or what would you?
Not necessarily. I mean, couple of things, like I said, I'm hearing. Go back to the groups and say, looks like we have a workshop, but please, you know, give us some information before we can even have that workshop, because we don't want to hear. You know, so that's one. Uh again, I am curious, probably, probably a no brainer on the uh historical society or the Legion, if you just want me to find that internally, that those are the things that I think makes sense. And uh would be curious of their councils out on the COVID, use of COVID funding, just for those some projects, so there's any concern about that. So there's a few little uh small items. And again, what are you thinking, uh you want to push it for each one or anything like that, or just a?
Um, well, it, no, I think that we could do it like point form, right? That that council directs staff to include dot, 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 dot on into the
Financial plan.
Into the financial plan. I think we can do it that way. That's, that's how I would.
Yeah, I would do it.
Council Hanson.
I I very much, um, oh, a couple of questions. One, what does our um agreement look like for increasing in um our um employee expenses next year? Taking that into consideration, what that looks like.
Yes.
Um when I was at the um Chamber of Commerce event, um you know, it was brought forward that, you know, the R D K B portion of property taxes is going to be going up uh very loudly and proudly, thirty-three percent. So, you know, taking that into very strong consideration for, you know, decisions we make. Um but also making sure that we have enough to make sure we cover what our our growing expenses are based on our labor, you know, agreements, based on planning. Um I like the idea of the um planning, uh great uh manager of planning and climate action with the O C P updates. Um I know all of the studies that need to happen, the new housing legislation, stuff that's always changing and fluid. Um but I would uh be interested to know what kind of return do you get from the R D K B for building department? But because if we're streamlining the process to make it easier for people to do building, what are we getting back up with that? Like if we're, you know, getting everybody to the gate and all they gotta do is apply for the permit and we're doing all the work to get there. And it's not a back and forth and back and forth. What's that word?
Again, great questions. And this is where, without having a planning department that you could say, oh, here's what we're doing. That is, I think, sort of the front-end work that we may be looking at is, is could we have some, maybe a previous director look at what we have and kind of what our fees are or what um even before somebody gets hired sort of thing, almost uh to the person walks in saying, hey, we need to get a uh a policy on this or a policy on that. One thing that R D K B piece is that we get the funding uh from the building department. So that's where, uh I I don't know necessarily that there would be that much of a linkage, other than if if we are providing open for business and we get more development, then that's of course going to drive uh the building permit individuals. Building inspectors having to do more work and that dollar amount based on building permit, we have them flowing the city as well.
My point is, it is, you know, doing it to justify if we're getting an uptake, is what we're gonna get in those building apartment or the building permit fees gonna be enough to supplement it, going, you know, this year, but what is next year looking like?
And that's where I would say he does something in that seat to kind of look around and spend the time to say, okay, you know, you guys are charging a hundred dollars for this. Everyone else is charging four hundred dollars. I mean, and those are the people that are trying to do a development. And what is a fair amount? That's the work that needs to be done as well. Um and I would suggest to you that that this is preparing us, as you know, and I think you're, everyone's encouraged about what can happen here intro. Uh and it's I don't want council thinking that all of a sudden there's gonna be all these fees that are like, you know, pay for the manager planning. That that's likely not something that's going to happen. But I think it is something that can assist in doing that. If you've got policies and um in place for those that are doing development and how that's not on the whole, all the taxpayer, that it's as much as possible being robust enough that whether or not it's building permit revenue that we get and or fees that we're getting, that is assisting the community. But I don't have a number for you right now that says this is what it would be.
I just think it's really hard for us to plan in the future for the Rachel district, because we really have no control over that. And actually going through those building permits and trying to get, you know, a few extra dollars on it isn't going to make a big difference in our budget.
No, but there have been, when you look back in the past, there have been certain times when there's been some pretty major developments. And then you get that uh boost in 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 revenues. And and sometimes I know other communities that have a bit more development, they sort of uh straighten it. It decides you're using a building inspector a lot. Uh and then you're not, but they kind of take some of that additional revenue that you get, put it in a reserve. So that when you've got the leaner years, when your building inspector is not doing so many projects, that there's still sort of a funding source that's sort of flatlined, instead of having these huge spikes and then drops that can happen with building permit revenue. Uh so that's one way of of handling it. And those are, again, conversations, I think, going into the future. If that's what you're seeing, that can be a way to help smooth uh the results. But I guess I would say that that's not necessarily on R D K B. And and it's absolutely true, R D K B, but we talked about this last year. We have, we're gonna have a brand new sewer street plant. And um the borderline for that is what is the factor? And that's uh not something I would say that is was planned for. COVID wasn't planned for the spin-off of of cost of construction isn't something that was planned for. That is going to, um, you know, uh hit, have a lift. But I would repeat, and and I, and I know that our director that sits there and the directors that are there are also very concerned and asking the questions. It is a a difficult entity to deal with because you have, you know, a director that's part of a a board, but they're also part of this board. So here, it's everything's about trail and you can make your decisions here. When you're at that as a representative and you've got all those other people that are voting on things, but they're not always, we're not part of this community or we're not part of the community. And I, I would say that the fact that you've got, can have, you know, fully upgraded a street with street plan. Some of these other places haven't had that happening yet. And so when we talk about, oh, where you're at, it's like, well, we'll see where you're at when you have to replace yours or get to the level of treatment that the product, the violence is saying, right? We're not, they're not there yet, some of them. And I, but I also know that it, and again, I understand. I talked about before, you know, the individuals that take phone calls, try to do shopping, having someone talk to you about what the pressure is. Um but we just also don't lose sight of kind of keeping trail strong with the services that you provide here, because you've got some costs coming from another organization that you're part of. And we had talked about that sewer street plant, you know, going to be a big lift. But to repeat myself, that lift is this year and then it's not expected to be going like, oh, hey, we've got another amount like that again. And yes, it's a lift because we need to fund that sewer street plant, that debt for thirty years. So but that's true, true plant should last for fifty or, you know, seven, five years, something. So it's it's not uncommon to borrow and pay for something and then that fee is sort of carried by those people that in thirty years are living here. It's not just all along the current taxpayers. Square blowing can be a way of smoothing it again. So part of me is that I, what I just in my process, if I went right now and said, look at, come back for the fourteenth meeting. Do what I usually do, the presentation of like, here's the change year over year, here's the change for the average home. Uh looking at a four percent would basically have you balanced here and around there, pretty close. You know, I will provide all the other documentations that we do when we're working. If you remember from my PowerPoint, just kind of the different pieces. And this will give you some time to look through this. I've seen more questions that you may have. Yeah. I, for me, I feel positive that that looking at a four percent tax increase, um and again, a loss, I mean, what the R D E is going up, but this is also would be a lot higher, because also the other thing is that R C N P, that budget is going up significantly, just because the cost per officer. And now we're going to have um, well, hopefully as close to a full complement as we can have, which we haven't had in the past. So those are things you need to budget for. Uh but we've got a net like good ads in there, but we've also had some really good revenues. And when you hear things like, hey, we're adding six more classes because we've got the, you know, for lifeguards or we, you know, we're, we're looking at that revenue side. Yeah, you're gonna get to a max point, but we're also gonna have both rigs operational, both rigs updated completely. That's the other thing that we saw was the kids' rate, a lot more rental income coming in for that and people wanting to use it. So, yeah. So what I look overall of what we are doing and adding in here, uh the fact that we've got additional revenues because we're entrepreneurial, uh even with the airport lifted and what the airport revenue is expected to be, those are all things that are helping actually keep this in a yeah, a little more than inflationary, but uh you know, overall, I think, really positive for the city.
Okay.
Sure. One question to the chair. Um and I maybe should have addressed this sooner. C I B funding increase request. Are they looking at increasing their budget? Do we get information on that?
I didn't, but I kept it at, well, sorry, thank you. Uh sometimes I rush through these things. I I think, I, it's been a bit of a I won't say mystery, but we've tried to to work with C I B because we are being, you know, trying to work with them on their organizational structure. And uh but just want to make sure we kept the funding as it was last year, a hundred and forty-five thousand. But just wanted to make sure we kept the funding as it was last year, a hundred and forty-five thousand. Um, I haven't heard anything from them about. You know, maybe that was something that they've, we talked about, maybe like, hey, wait a second, we need a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I don't know, but I have heard nothing from them. But I understood that they ordered plants and that they were looking at, um, you know, getting their operations going, but I hadn't heard anything otherwise of whether that funding stream was enough. Um, I don't know if you have any.
No, I have no information either.
Yeah, I, I don't have any numbers either. And there is a meeting on Friday, the twenty-seventh, on Thursday. Okay. So maybe they'll have something there, which would help with their discussion on April fourteenth.
So what, thank you for noticing that and for, for reminding that it was a question mark there that I hadn't heard anything from that group. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Hanson. Say we took a year off of not putting into the old bridge reserve.
Right.
It's because you said once we get to a point where they want to like, oh, is that, would that, would that just be like a drop in the?
Well, again, so there, so if you were to do that, instead of being at four, you're going to be at three point. Five kind of thing. And yeah, I mean, those are all great questions to ask. Um, and, but that's, that's one way of, of being able to do it. So, hey, we've done something a lot here. It's taken a year or two off. Those are, those are. That's, that's a, a way we can work on things, for sure. Yeah.
But let's not forget the estimate that we got for the old bridge to narrow down was a, well, four or five years ago, was five million dollars. Yeah, so, you know, so, I mean. I totally get what you're trying to do, and I understand it, but I don't. A little bit nervous. I mean, this way, if the province sees if anything happens, it happened, and they saw that we were working towards had savings in there. I don't think they would be so hard on us if something happened and they had to come in and help with the, the expenses, or that's my understanding.
And again, uh, these are all great things, and you can feed them even as I prepare, but I will refer the document with more detail on kind of what's happening and what the effect is on people, right? And because I gave them a small one, you know, because we increased the water rates, but part of that was they also weren't paying any more garbage fee, right? And we also kind of absorbed some of that into earlier. But, um, yeah, I think it's going to be important that the community and sees what that effect is of, of uh the increase of the RDKB.
And the RDKB requisition is built into this from?
That's not, that'll be separate, because, because this is taxes as base just solely on our taxpayers, not under the RDKB formula.
No, 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 I mean the twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so it's not in here. It will be, it'll, it'll be part of that.
An additional, okay.
Yeah, additional one time.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So are you looking for a number to go back with, to bring back to council, or?
What I, I just wanted to show council kind of where we are landing, and I think that what I will do, if I put the four percent in, I'll bring the information. Counsel, they can kind of see where they sit, and if they're like, hey, we want a little bit less, if we want to take some money away from the bridge this year, those are all kinds of conversation pieces that we can count on. And hopefully at the end of, of that fourteen, that it'd be great to say, okay, here's what we're good to go for, and then we can just get the financial plan done. Audit will be, you know. Hopefully mostly done, so a lot of this, we're in a much better shape for coming into having a bit of time to before, you know, so if we did that, then. The la- last meeting in April, or um if you wanted more time, we could have the. Your meeting, I think it's like twelve, it's uh, uh, May, we could have the first three readings, and then we could have that. Twenty-four hour wait and then be able to do that. So there's a bit of time here for a conversation and uh. And, you know.
So I might even suggest that we just have a special council meeting to deal with just the budget, so we don't have all this other.
Yeah.
Um, information going on at the same time, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's no other questions, I'm going to move this report for information. Okay, um, oh, because did you want a motion to include this in the twenty?
Well, some of the, the, the asks that I had, whether or not it was just sort of, you know, council directs staff to get this workshop going. You know, you know, cover the cost of these two other items, that you're okay with the manager of planning and how we've got it. So if you could have a bit of that way. All in one or?
Well, as you were saying, if you put it in bullet points of, of that, maybe. This was pretty good of a.
I think.
Yeah, so I just put the council direct staff to include the following expenses in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-nine financial plan. Creation of a manager of planning and climate action at seventy-nine thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-five, Trail Legion commemorative. Um, sorry, commemorative crosswalk project for four thousand, Trail Historical Society increase in grant request of three thousand six hundred and sixty-five. Secession planning of corporate officer and IT assessment outcomes of two hundred thousand dollars. And what was the other one that you were saying?
Uh, well, the other part is that the, those two would be funded, get the workshop, and then also that. Use of uh COVID funding and climate action to assist with the, the cost of the expense. Of, of the. And the, uh, the manager.
I said two hundred thousand um dollars, and I just put using.
Yeah, COVID funding.
COVID funding?
Yes.
Um. And that.
And then also that thirty thousand from the climate action uh reserve be put towards in twenty-twenty-five. The manager of planning and climate.
Oh, so that using, sorry, how much was that calling?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand? From the climate action. Climate action reserve. Okay, and do we need something in there about the three groups coming?
Yes.
Okay, and that further. Further, um, the. Chamber.
Yeah, request, request information on outcomes of twenty-twenty-four findings. From those that did not report. And let's stop it directly to set up a workshop. What said, information has been provided to council.
Yeah, what's going on?
Uh, just a question again, when, to the chair.
Yeah.
Some clarity for me here on the creation of a manager of planning and climate action, seventy-nine thousand dollars. What exactly does that mean? Does that mean we're looking at hiring a planner and this would be a part-time position? Or is this, this, the, this is our research and development and?
This, this would be a manager of planning and climate action. Um, and because we get the climate action funds, that's part of the, the tie-in of being able to. That we already get the money from the public for that. Uh, and yes, it would be a planner. So what I was trying to say is that we're already here. We're not going to have a planner for probably like June or July kind of thing. So that's why the funding is less in twenty-twenty-five. And that you're seeing it at the full-time position, if, if agreeing to, uh, would, right now, we're budgeting at like a hundred and thirty-eight, thank you, yeah.
Well, we need to finish here. Thank you so much for that report. For that, for a lot of time and energy.
Yeah, and, and we're really set up because now we have all of the uh labor accounts separated inside the budget, and we've got the ability to now to. Um, match. Employees' wages, benefits, you know, and sort of make sure that now there should be an accuracy on, hey, this person's in here, you know, yes, it might be above and below, maybe that's because of. Overtime, or maybe certain person wins a position, it's definitely a law, but we'll be able to uh very clearly sort of see where we've got challenges or where we've got opportunity.
Okay, which I. Thank you so much. Um, the council direct staff to include the following expenses in the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-nine financial plan. Creation of a manager of planning and climate action, seventy-nine thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-five, losing three thousand dollars of the climate action reserve. Trail Legion commemorative crosswalk project of four thousand dollars, Trail Historical Society increase in grant request of three thousand six hundred and sixty-five. Secession planning for the corporate officer and IT assessment outcomes of two hundred thousand dollars using COVID funding. And further, request information on the outcomes of the twenty-twenty-four funding from those groups who did not report, and that the LCC, DTS. Many futures and Chamber of Commerce be invited to attend the workshop shop on economic development.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor? That was Carrie.
Thanks for your patience, uh, counsel, and again, I apologize again if you didn't help them.
Okay, so, um. West Cooney Leonard Softball Association request for a grant. And um the application was in the package, um, and lots of good information, but I will hand this over to um Sandy. Did you want to? Do you think we need to?
The grounds.
It's pretty all, it's all they have, the information is in. Um. So any comments or questions before we move the motion, the recommendation? No, we did a good job of reporting and giving us all the information. Okay, so the recommendation is before council that the application from the West Cooney Leonard Softball Association. Um, for a cash grant in the amount of. Two thousand five hundred dollars be approved. Thank you, Councilor Kanshla and Councilor Butler. All those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. Uh, item, uh, seven B is the Trail and District Arts Council request for cash grant and rental waiver. And the application is for a um. Rental waiver of eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents and a cash grant in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. Any questions or comments before we move that? Okay, Sarah Mover, please. Councilor Butler, thank you. Uh, Councilor Wilson, all those in favor?
And that was to approve, correct?
Yes, thank you.
And.
And the one above was to approve as well.
And here, Jones and counsel, we will uh, for the next time that we've got a grant, we will get that spreadsheet going so you know.
Okay, um, any questions? There's question period. Don't see any. Uh, I need a resolution to rise from the committee of the whole, and the resolution is that council considered a resolve to rise from the committee of all. Councilor Benson, thank you, and Councilor Hanson, uh, all those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. And uh, the next item ten is to a resolution to exclude the public. And the resolution is that pursuant to section ninety, of the community charter, the public be excluded from this portion of the meeting. As the subject matter being considered relates to the following, the community charter section ninety-one E. A community charter section ninety-one G, and the community charter section ninety-one L. And further, that the public portion of the meeting be recessed until six o'clock PM, and further, that council immediately resolved. Into the closed portion of their meeting. Councilor Butler, thank you, and Councilor Wilson, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.